Okay, it's now 4:45 and I would like to welcome everybody to the Murray City Municipal Council Committee of the Whole. And our first issue to deal with is approval of the minutes for the Committee of the Whole for September 7th, 2021. Do we have questions? Or if none, then I would take a motion?
I'll move that we approve the Committee of the Whole minutes for September 7th, 2021.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? So the motion passes. All right. Also, all of the members of the council are here with the exception of Kat Martinez, and she is excused. Now, discussion items. The first one is discussion on Murray City adopting a park impact fee. And we have Aaron Montgomery from Zion's Public Finance and Kim Sorensen. Hi, Kim.
Hi there.
Welcome, Aaron.
Okay. Thanks, council. Am I on?
You're on.
Again, we have Aaron Montgomery with Zion's Financial, who put together our park impact analysis and plan. And also, we have Ted May Estes in the audience. Ted is a member of our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. So let me just recap how we got to this point with a park impact fee. So you may remember back in March at a CLW meeting, I came before you and asked you if you would support the city doing a park impact fee analysis and plan, and then bringing it to the council. At that time, there was support from the council, at least to go ahead and do the initial work on the analysis. So we then contracted with Zion's Financial and Aaron Montgomery put together that plan. And a couple other things that, just to be aware of, Murray has never had a park impact fee. Most of the cities in Salt Lake County have a park impact fee. In fact, most of the cities in the state of Utah have a park impact fee. So as we looked at this, and the reason that we brought it up to you is we had adopted our park master plan in April of 2020. Along with the master plan, we asked the company that did the master plan to look at funding sources. And one of the suggestions from the master plan was to look at a park impact fee for funding, as well as to continue to fund the CIP projects. So after the plan was put together by Aaron, we then took it to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And again, Ted May Estes is here today. They researched the plan, studied the plan, and then came back with a positive, unanimous positive towards moving forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Aaron. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Trying to make sure close enough to this that it can be heard. So yes, this is the Murray Parks Trails and Rec Impact Fee Analysis, well, Impact Fee Facilities Plan and Analysis Presentation. I'll just walk through really quickly a review of what an impact fee is. It's a one-time fee. It's charged to new development to offset the capital costs of public infrastructure associated with the new development. Essentially, you have parks that are serving a certain number of people right now, and as new growth comes in, there's less park to go around per person, because now there's more people. So these are collected in hopes that, well, with the idea and the direction that they will be used to expand the existing facilities to maintain a level of service to offset the new growth, to make sure facilities grow as new development occurs. So what costs can be included? The actual cost of existing facilities with capacity to serve growth, the cost of new construction for expanded facilities. You cannot include R and R, no curing of deficiencies, no O and M, no enhancement of current level of service. So we cannot improve the parks with impact fees above where they are currently. So that's what these set. They must, the only thing that these consider are system capital improvements. So the difference between a system and a project is projects only serve a small neighborhood. Systems serve your entire city. So you can't have a small park that's meant for just the neighborhood included in your facilities in your IFFP.
Would you go back for just a second?
Sure.
Is that the difference between 1 and 3? Actual cost of existing facilities with capacity to serve and grow? So if we grew a park, we could use these funds, but we couldn't fix the slide at the current park?
That, I mean, that's essentially correct. Yeah, it's about expanding. Yeah, you cannot repair, you can't repair the slide. The slide would come from funds that are already provided, because that's how they would be fixed if there wasn't new growth. This is purely expanding your facilities to maintain a level of service. Yeah. And we'll get into the numbers. Any other questions on this slide? Okay. Impact fees. So let me just go over simply, I mean, quickly what an impact fee facilities plan and an IFA impact fee analysis is. The impact fee facilities plan establishes service levels, your existing, your proposed. It shows excess capacity, if there is any, demand created by new development, consumption of excess capacity, and then new facilities needed, and the cost. Your impact fee analysis puts forward the proportionate share. So it calculates the impact fee. It establishes buy-in for excess capacity. It shows construction costs for new facilities and other costs, engineering, financial, or fund balances, and also financing and credits, if there are any. So let's look at the growth, the expected growth in Murray. This is from 2021, the current year, through 2031, a 10-year period of time. As you can see, it's about 2,000 people is what the population is expected to grow. Pretty small, all in all, but still impacts will be felt with 2,000 additional people. So service levels as currently established for parks, 4.21 acres per 1,000 people. Trails, 2.17 trail feet per person. The recreational facilities are $283.87 as a cost per person. And the aquatic facilities are $38.92 as a cost per person. And that's per square feet on the facilities. So the impacts of growth, this slide shows what would happen if there was no additional facilities built with the addition of about 2,000 people. You can see how between 2021, 2031, the level of service will decrease if there are no facilities added. So that's the hope of the impact fees, is to establish what new units would be needed in all these different categories to maintain the current level of service. So as we look here, for parks, it's 8.32 acres at a cost of 3.2, about 3.2 million. Trail feet, 4,283 feet at $165,140,000. Recreational facilities, 2,245 square feet at a cost of $561,325. And there is excess capacity in the aquatic facilities in the amount of $74,093. That's expected to be consumed over the next 10 years, and that facility will then be, as expected, to be at capacity. So no new facilities need to be built for the aquatic facilities, but it is anticipated that there is a cost associated with consumption of excess capacity there. So the total is about $3.9 million for construction and consumption of excess capacity. So when we look at this, a proportionate share takes that amount, those amounts, and it divides them by people, the number of growth, the number of people that is expected to have or come into Murray in the next 10 years. So we look at the parks, trails, recreational facilities, aquatic facilities, and consultant costs can also be included in that. So these are all the costs per person. At the bottom, you can see the maximum cost per person is just over $2,000. So that would be the base of where your impact fee is at. Now, when we're looking at growth, we look at household sizes, because when you bring a new unit or a new household into the city, that's who will be charged the impact fee. So impact fees, according to the ACS, or that's the U.S. Census Bureau, American Community Survey, single family in Murray is 2.63 people per household, and multifamily is 2.42 people per household. So we take the maximum fee per person and multiply it by that count of household size, and then you get the maximum impact fee for a single-family unit at $5,396.23, and maximum impact fee for multifamily at $4,965.35. And I meant to put a question slide, but I forgot. So we'll just stay here, since I'm sure this is probably the most interesting slide, anyway. Are there any questions?
I have a question. Sorry, I can't see you. But how, what, how did we predict that there would only be 1,900 of increase? And what if it's more? Because I'm assuming, and I don't know if more, Melinda, is, but in the next two years, there's going to be a substantial growth and a lot of empty properties. And from my understanding and calculation, maybe I'm wrong, it's more than 1,900. And so that's sooner than 10 years. How do we, how do we measure for that? Do we just use the same calculations? Or how do we adjust?
So the population projection, just double-checking, is what I believe the city is expecting. We got it from the city. If the population is greater, these ratios are based on the level of service currently. So if you have more people come in, those ratios won't change. This is pegging currently where your level of service is at. So if you have more growth than is expected, it would be expected that you would collect more than what we're saying in here that is needed, but it would be at the same ratio. Because we're trying to help you collect the money that you need to maintain a level of service. The growth helps us get to a point so that we can build those ratios. But the number that grows will be, how much you collect will be based on how many units are built. So if it's more than expected, it should still be the right amount to collect to maintain the level of service in 2021.
If we, and maybe this is a question for you, Kim, if we meet the 1,900 within the next, like, three to five years, would it create a bust in the system? Like, would the infrastructure of the rec center be a little overwhelming? Or would the parks and facilities? I mean, I want to make sure you have the right amount of staff and the right amount of, that you're prepared for the what-if, if that happens faster than you can handle, too.
So that's a great question. This would cover the impact on maintaining our level of service. But I think your question is operation and maintenance, right? Yeah, so impact fee money can't be used for operation and maintenance. So we would need to get that from the general fund. This money can be used to develop new parks and more opportunities for recreation.
Okay. So with that, I mean, I would hate to put, I mean, the park's already full, Murray especially, but that we just have, we hit, I guess my concern is, if we hit population faster than the 10 years, is there a plan, in case?
And I also guess if, if what you're saying happens, then you would, you would also be increasing your property taxes. So you would have more property taxes and sales tax essentially to cover operation and maintenance.
And if I could just add something to that, too. The idea behind the impact fee is to collect funds to expand the park facilities. So instead of your parks getting smaller with more, I mean, staying the same with more people coming to the parks, the idea is you would build more parks and have more park space. So if, if it's growing faster than you would expect, then you would collect more funds than we probably are predicting, and still be able to build more park facilities to facilitate new growth and additional people.
Thank you.
Any other questions here? We're good. You can continue.
Well, this is the end.
Oh, this is it? Oh, I'm sorry.
This is the end of the presentation. I apologize.
One thing that I really kind of wanted to be clear on is on, and I believe I have my notes right near here. Hmm, hmm, hmm. Can't remember what page it is, but, hold on, give me one second. Oh, it had to do with the developer, if a developer decided they wanted to do space within their development. How does that, can you kind of elaborate a little bit more about that? If a developer comes in and says, hey, I'm going to put green space in my development, how would that work under impact fees? And what's the benefit? What would we lose?
Well, that's always it, I mean, those, those kind of, you know, building facilities in lieu of impact fees is always up to the city, whether they'll allow that. And so I think it, and you would always want to consider that impact fees are meant to serve the system, the full city. So those are normally discussions that you would have on a case-by-case basis with the developer. But I think you have to just weigh it with what they bring to you and say, is this, is it fair to our citizens to let them count this instead of have impact fees? Is it serving our city in a way that benefits them? Or is it just better for us to collect the impact fee and serve growth in the way that we know will benefit the whole city? So normally, we're not too involved in that, so I can't give you any historical experience from that. But I would say that's kind of the general idea, is it's on a case-by-case basis, and the city determines whether it's, it is completely as beneficial. And that's what I would say. You want to make sure it's beneficial to the whole city when making those considerations.
Okay, thank you.
Kim, you had mentioned earlier, I didn't catch, tell me how many, or maybe, Aaron, you can tell us, but how many cities are doing the now impacts?
I can tell you, Brett, that the only city that orders Murray that is not is Midvale.
Okay.
And I think I included in your packet a list of cities.
You did.
But most of the cities are charging an impact fee. And as I was collecting this data, there were a number of cities, Mill Creek City, Lehigh City, and Holiday, that were looking at increasing theirs. So, and if you look at Midvale's park system, you understand why they don't have a park impact fee.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Even, even the one that surprised me was Taylorsville City, which their park system is not near what Murray's is, and their impact fee is $1,290.
So what is the max and what's the low? Is there a max and low? Or is there just a target that just fits Murray the best?
So this is establishing a maximum impact fee. That's what's being shown right now on the, on the screen. And that, essentially, what this is saying is there will be impacts from growth. This maximum impact fee pushes the entire cost of expanding the facilities and the parks onto the developers. If you do a maximum impact fee, the idea is that the citizens won't pay for any growth. Parks constructed because of growth, the developer will. And they often, you choose how they deal with that in their developments. So if you feel that you don't want the developers, and then it's okay for, because the cost will come from somewhere. And so if you don't charge the maximum fee, then, and you go a lower amount, just be aware it, the funds will come from somewhere to expand the park facilities, or the level of service will decrease.
So will this help offset kind of increasing taxes to have more parks? Or would, how does, I guess I'm just trying to understand that part. I mean, I guess it could. We could increase taxes.
Yeah.
Wanted to, to have more parks or facilities? Okay.
Yeah, it really depends on if, you know, the city can determine that it's okay with not having the same level of service, and, you know, maybe we have too many parks, you know, or too much. Didn't sound like from your comments earlier that parks are full. So probably want to make sure you have enough park space.
I just really want a healthy life for citizens in general, so this is great for me.
And Murray's got great parks. I mean, I've been, I don't live in Murray, and I come to the parks here sometimes to play pickleball and things like that. So you also have people from outside that come.
Yeah.
And there's no way to account for that. But yes, if you charge the maximum amount, it goes to the developers. Or you can let the level of service decrease and not necessarily raise taxes. Or you can, it can come from the general fund or taxpayers through an increase in taxes. It's whatever the city deems to be best, but it's really kind of up to the city what they choose to adopt.
Thank you.
I'm not finding a list of the cities, so we're...
I will send you one tomorrow.
Okay. I was just wondering how we compare with the others. I see all the other stuff, but I can't see the list of cities in this.
I'll make sure you have one tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Can I add just a little something?
Sure, of course.
So for Rosalba, for you, this is how this, almost how the state legislature says we have to account, or come up with, how are you going to come up scientifically with a fee? You can't just pull it out of the air. So that's what they did. If we have more growth, because it's by unit, so if somebody puts in 100 units, they will pay 100 times this. If somebody puts in 300 units, they'll put, and if somebody came in and put 2,000, there's no place in the city you could do this, put in the whole 1,000 all at once, we'd have all the money all at once. So, but the caveat on this money is we have six years, parks are six years, to spend it. And it has to be new facilities. So what this could happen is you would have a pot of money sitting there, and if somebody says, oh, I have this big open space, or I have this acre here in the middle of this neighborhood that I would sell to you, we would have the funds to do that. Where right now, maybe not.
Thank you, Brenda. I really just needed that visual, because I, I thought, I really did think that it was that, so it was great to have her explain that. So I appreciate that.
And just one addition to that, six years from the time you collect it. So it's not six years from now when you adopt it. It's, so spend what you collect today first, and do the, you know, I'm sure your accounts will follow that, so.
And well, so what, does this, let's say there is a land now we wanted to purchase, and this wasn't in effect, could we substitute the money later for that? Or it has to be in that timeframe?
As long as it's connected with growth, you know, then I think you can say we anticipate the growth, and we, we bought this land for growth, and when we put the new facility on, then we could pay for it or reimburse the cost. Yeah, because there are times, you know, and this is jumping, because parks are not as big, but if you do like an impact fee for water, you might put in a $2 million water facility, and you're not going to collect all that right up front, but you need to put it in, because growth is coming. And so over the years, you reimburse, as you collect it back into, take from the impact fee fund, reimburse it back into your general fund, or wherever you paid for it, to reimburse essentially the taxpayers for fronting that bill initially. So yes, it can be happening.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
It would be really helpful if we could, as part of our discussion, if we could have a list of the other cities, what their impact fees are, where, you know, our proposed impact fees would fit in. So are you guys okay with now, or should we extend the discussion? What do you, what do you think?
Do you have, is it in, it was in there?
It was in there, and I have...
I know it was online.
One copy, but...
I know it was online, I just can't find it in our packet.
I've gone over it many times, but...
I didn't see that in my packet either.
Yeah.
Why don't we just have him get it to us tonight or tomorrow?
Okay. Are you okay with that? And then does that...
And I can even, okay.
See the magic of technology?
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Doug.
And one thing to consider, too, Diane, as you're looking at the list, you're going to see some cities that you're going to think, that's pretty low. Then you're going to see some cities that you're going to think, that's pretty high. For example, I remember St. George and Spanish Fork, and I think Lehigh were high. Well, that's because their park system is at a high level of service. If the impact fee is low, let's take Taylorsville, for example. I think I said it was $1,290, $1,290. Well, the reason their impact fee is so low is because the value of their park and recreation facilities is low when considered to the number of residents that they have. Does that help?
So it needs to be apples to apples?
It does need to be apples to apples. And Murray's park system is, is pretty good.
Oh, it's wonderful.
I have one, another question. Does it calculate the acreage from cities, based on, do you have that?
Say that again.
Calculate the acreage from other cities? I'm assuming Murray has a high acreage in parks.
Yeah, it does not calculate that. But as you look at it, you can, you can figure that in as well. It's a good point.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. We got the information, so I appreciate that. Thank you so much. I think we're good, unless there are other questions?
No, thank you for doing this, and thank you for, can't see you both, but thank you guys for looking into this and putting this together. I really appreciate it. I appreciate it.
That was my pleasure. Just my last little thing, I tell everybody in Murray this, I love Murray, because I worked here for a little bit. Before I was in school, I was a water handyman, is what I called them. I worked for Danny Astle, just driving a truck around and fixing sprinklers. So I love coming back here. This is one of my favorite cities, so you guys, special place in my heart.
All right.
Should have seen the look on his face when he walked in and saw you.
Oh, no, I didn't know my old boss was here. I thought he was going somewhere else.
I know. It's crazy. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
And thanks for coming back, Aaron.
Anytime.
All right. We'll continue on, and we are now number two, discussion on changes to building permit fees. Melinda and Dawn Stephenson.
Hopefully you can hear me all right with my mask on. If not, let me know, and I can take that off. Wanted to introduce to you Dawn Stephenson, our building official. He started in August of last year as the building official, and this is his first time with you all in this group. So it kind of reminds me of if you've ever been to Cafe Rio, and you let the staff up front know when you're ordering it your first time, and they all say, first timer. So this is, this is Dawn's first time with you all. So we hopefully can go a little bit gently on him. But a little bit of background with Dawn, we stole him away essentially from Midvale City a couple of years ago. He served as our plans examiner for a year, and then we promoted him to the building official last August of 2020. So he's got 30 years plus, really, of building inspection services, which doesn't make sense, because he's only 40... which doesn't make sense because he's only 43. But what we are here to present to you tonight is really a housekeeping item. With the opportunity we have, hopefully within the next 60 to 90 days to go online live with a different software to process our building permits. We we wanted to clean up and get in code the actual amounts and the methodologies of the building permit fees that we process. There's there's Uniform Building Code that we refer to when we process building permit fees. And that code requires that the official body of the jurisdiction adopt the building fees. So in chapter 15.08 of the city code is where we we have our building permit fees. And we're really not changing the fees or calculating them any differently. We're just clarifying the process that we have been using. And so there's two parts to building permit fees. And this is where if you have questions about it, Don can answer because that's his expertise. But you use a formula to calculate, excuse me, the math. And then you also have rates that you use to plug into the formulas. So we are wanting to just have all of this in one place for everybody who may need to pay for a building permit fee to see that. Previously, the tables have not been in the city code. They've just been referenced. So this is, I think, a pretty straightforward item. And building fees vary based on what type of product you're building, the square footage, the valuation, even the construction methodology. So that's a real brief explanation of the code change that we have before you this evening. You did receive in your packet a redlined copy that I think looks a little bit more threatening than what it really is, only in the way that we're just trying to plug in those amounts and the tables into there. So Don, do you have anything to add?
No, if there's any questions I could answer, it's like you say, pretty straightforward.
So I have a question. So is that Melinda, you just answered it. That's the only thing that's being changed there is the tables and the permit fees. Is that what you said? That's the only.
Yeah, they're really not being changed, they're being clarified.
Okay. So there's nothing different, just clarifying everything?
Yes. Going through it, it's basically was never itemized down, especially for a computer. So now we need to have everything clear when we go live to be wireless, you know, paperless, the best we can.
There are a few clarifications, very minor, I would say. One is, let me just look here, the staff report. But one of the things we have tried to make the fees be more consistent across the board. So if there was one fee that was $50 and another fee that was 65, but they were very similar, we've we've tried to make them it match exactly. Yeah, so and we've also made an effort to have the fees just be a little bit more reflective of the current, I guess, the current process. So as an example, we are having inspections that may need to take place outside of our regular work hours would be charged at $80 an hour to the individual that needs the inspection. And we would have a two hour minimum. And that would be we did that. We don't do that very frequently, but we did just have a situation probably about six weeks ago where we needed to come in over the weekend and do some special inspections outside of another business's working hours. So that that is an additional item that we have clarified in there. I don't know if we've really had that fee in code before, though we have been charging it. So we're just trying to be more transparent with the fees and what we charge so that it's all in one place. And this actually came about earlier this year with Brenda's office wanting to, through the budget office, wanting to know what all of the fees are that each division department charges. And so we wanted to just revise everything, have it in there all in one spot.
Because we had it on tables, not necessarily in one spot. So.
Thank you.
I have a few questions. So in areas where it didn't have residential, you added residential right to keep it, to keep kind of keep it so it's universal. And then under section, I'm assuming C, under multifamily residential, you have a you've taken off commercial buildings from versus square footage and added and a cost, a fixed cost. I'm assuming the value of the property instead of square footage. Can you kind of expand on that a little bit?
So which section are you looking at in the code Rosalba?
15 dot 08030, item C.
Item C.
And underneath it, it lists what used to be in code for commercial buildings for of square footage. And now it's new residential dwellings will be $200, commercial buildings and remodels, valuation. I'm assuming that's the amount of the property or the amount of the project.
No, that's a pre plan review fee. So when they bring that in, we take just a little small amount that goes towards their plan review fee. So it's just an upfront cost to cover a little bit of our cost. If they come in and decide not to do it, we've taken some of the money to cover our cost.
Okay. But you guys are just reevaluating the costs differently is all okay.
Yeah, the whole and I should have backed up even more and started at the very beginning, but building fees are intended to be self supported fees. So all of the fees that we charge are supposed to go back into the service that we're providing. And that's in in building, it's not only just inspections, but we review all of the plans that come in to make sure that they meet building code, to make sure that they meet zoning code, subdivision code, fire code. And so all of these fees then go to pay for, if we have third party reviews that we have, it helps pay for building division salary. And and so with with those plan reviews, we like to have some type of a little guarantee that we provide the service, even if they don't get a building permit in the end, which does happen, then we still have some payment for those services that we rendered, even if they don't come and pick up a building permit fee. So that's the $200 fee that you you're seeing for new residential dwellings. We would take a deposit essentially on a plan review for that at the amount of $200. And then if the end, the plan review fee was $400, when they pick up their permit fee, they pay that difference in addition to all of the fees that are calculated.
Perfect, thank you. And that's pretty standard, I'm assuming. That's a standard fee. Okay. And then the next question I have is about the solar. Can you kind of expand on that? It just I know the sentence is new in there, but kind of expand on the plan review fees for solar is lesser of actual costs. So is this something if somebody comes in and says, I want to add solar? I just was trying to understand that section.
So what we have is a set fee on the solar. So if you have a great big system, that's a set fee no matter what. But if it gets to be just a little teeny one, then that is reduced slightly. It's a solar fee, if you base it on the evaluation for the tables, your fee would be we would be taking way more than it costs us to do that. So we have a set fee for that. But then if it's just a really small, like a couple of panel system to run some very small unit, then we would take the lesser of that cost to make it basically fair that we're not overcharging our fees.
Perfect, thank you. That helped. Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Any other questions? It just looks like it's been cleaned up. I mean, that's basically what you're doing and kind of makes sense. Good. So if there are no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, we're at number three, which is a discussion on amending chapter 2.68 to reflect the new name of the MCCD Review Committee and requiring annual meetings. Melinda and Jared.
Okay, I did not have a PowerPoint for this particular item. But with the mixed use revisions that we passed in July of this year, one of the things we did with the MCCD zone was we removed the word design from the name of the MCCD Review Committee. So previously, we've we've referenced that committee as the MCCD DRC or the Design Review Committee. One of the things that we've discovered as we've worked a lot within this zone the last year plus is that there's, I think, a misconception that the MCCD Review Committee looks at architectural design and the elements of a building that are related to design as part of the review. And that's really not true. So this is kind of a very minute attempt to clarify that. What we're really looking at is a project review. We're looking at how parking may interface with building entrances. We're looking at how pedestrian space interfaces with parking access and those types of things. So because we changed the name in the Land Use Code, the Title 17 Land Use Code, we needed to go back and change the name in the the section of the city code that just outlines what all of the different boards and committees do. So this is just another housekeeping item that we're just removing that word. And hopefully with time, people can understand that they're really that it's more of a site design versus anything else on on the MCCD Review Committee. So this normally the items that we bring to you from my department have to have a public hearing. But the one we just talked about with building code is not in the Land Use Code. So we don't have a public hearing for that. And same with this, this is in chapter two, so we don't have to have a public hearing for this one. But just as kind of a housekeeping item, we want to be consistent with the names of all of the committees. So we're just wanting to take that word design out and just call it the MCCD Review Committee. I don't know if you have any questions, but Jared could elaborate a little bit more as to what the MCCD Review Committee really looks at when they are assessing projects that come through.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, so the the review committee typically, like Melinda started to address, we're looking mainly at site layout issues and and interactions between parking, et cetera, parking counts and all of those kind of things. Very little of the of the committee's review involves the actual architecture. And there had been those cases over that there are some elements that play into it. There are some design elements, but they are not the majority of the review. And so there was a kind of a perception at times that that they were some sort of architectural review committee, which is common in some cities, but we that we do not do. So we just wanted to make that adjustment to the name in Title 17 to remove any doubt that we were looking at that it was a full architectural review of these buildings. It's more of a project review like Melinda said. We look at how they're dealing with their drainage. We have specific requirements for low impact development standards and drainage, et cetera. And those don't really, they are designed, but when people read design, laypeople read design, they usually think of the building and and the layout of the building, the floor plans, the fixtures, the cladding materials, et cetera. And that's not what we're typically reviewing. So we just want to make that adjustment.
Yeah, and just to kind of show you the basics of some of those elements that they look at. This could be as simple as where to put a location for a dumpster for your your garbage that you have to take out so that that's not interfering with any of the building access or parking. How landscape may be better utilized to accomplish a particular goal of the planning commission mentioned this a couple of weeks ago in their meeting. But you know, you may want to have a good flow of pedestrian access that you can accomplish with landscaping versus just sticking a sidewalk in some place. And so those are really the types of things that they look at. And again, this is just kind of a slight attempt to help correct that misconception that comes with the word design.
Okay, questions?
Yes. So if we were to, this is just kind of a scenario. But if we were to remove the word design, could we at the direction of either? Who's over the committee again? Is it Jared, you?
We I staff the committee.
Okay.
So the planning divisions functions as staff for them.
Okay, so at any point, if for whatever reason in the future, we could change the process and it and we could include architectural design.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's not relevant to the code, right?
This is this is all this is to change the name to kind of remove any disassociation from the actuals of the code right now.
Correct.
To say you couldn't change your minds about how we do.
Okay. And then the second question I have, and you guys haven't even touched on this, is why would you want to remove it from quarterly meetings to annually? What is the what's the reasoning behind that?
Well, one good reason is that we don't like to have meetings just to have meetings. We've spent the entire year canceling the meetings because we haven't had any projects coming through. That's partially because of the moratorium that we had in place. But also, that's partially because you really should only hold meetings. I mean, we're required by law to have annual open meeting training for all of our boards and commissions, so we would hold at least one meeting. We may need to have other meetings to hold. You know, if we have new committee members to get them kind of on boarded and familiar with what they do. But other than that, if we don't have a project that comes through for nine months, it doesn't make much much sense to hold three meetings during those three quarters that really aren't necessary.
But you can cancel them, right? I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be codified.
Yeah, I think it makes more sense to I mean, whatever your preference is, I think it makes more sense to hold them as needed versus having meetings that are scheduled that are unnecessary. But that's really a policy decision, I suppose.
Same idea, you could have it say annually, but you could have them more often. Anytime you wanted is what you're saying.
Yeah, we don't, sorry. To be perfectly clear, saying that we do them quarterly now, required quarterly meetings, doesn't mean that we push everybody to those four meetings of the year and only hold four. We hold them whenever we have applications. And we would do the same with annual. We might make this change and say it's you're only required to hold them annually regardless. But that's the regardless. If we have three applications next month, we'll hold a meeting. We're not going to tell everyone we're only meeting in July.
Then could we add that into our code instead of saying just annually or an annually versus? Yes.
I suppose we could say it that way.
To clarify what you just said, because I mean, in the next year, we can see that they're going to have to meet more frequently. we can see that they're going to have to meet more frequently. We don't have a moratorium. But then after MCCD is developed, then we won't need them as often. So just to kind of clarify that, or we will, you know, we just don't know. So I would hate to say, "Let's go to annually," and then not utilize a board that is essentially for that district.
Well, it says at least annually in the code. So I think that covers what you're saying. It's maybe just phrasing it differently.
It's just a minimum.
Yeah.
We will meet at least once, but can meet as many times, they can meet 365 times if they wanted to, if they needed to.
That's great. I just want to solidify, I just don't have the, and I'm going to be blunt here, I just don't trust that it will happen or that it will continue to happen based off of the historical reference to MCCD and the lack of care of that district.
That the meetings will occur, you mean?
Yes.
We, or that it has real guidance. I mean, that's, I think you're maybe associating something here that isn't relevant. But we hold the meetings when we have somebody submit an application for a project. We do that for Planning Commission, we do that for our hearing officers, we do that for for all of this. So I mean, I think that's.
Some of those meetings are required. Right, this is not something we can just skip over and not go to the.
Right, I mean, code requires that if you're putting forth a project in the MCCD zone, it has to come through this process. So legally, we can't just not do that. I mean, I, we.
No, and I appreciate that.
Process them.
It's good that it's being clarified. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Now, we will go to Discussion on General Plan Amendment. Text of Chapter 5, Land Use and Urban Design to add CMU and VMU category. Melinda and Jared again.
Okay, thank you, and thanks for having us here to talk about this tonight. This is, I'm going to continue the theme of housekeeping. In a lot of ways, this is another housekeeping item. When the, this is an amendment or a proposed amendment to the text in Chapter 5 of the second part of our general plan, which is the land use and urban design element of the plan, in order to add those categories for the new mixed-use zones that were just implemented recently. So let me just really quickly show you, this slide shows you the zoning in the city. You can see the north edge of the city. Handily, it shows our TOD zone, that's the fire clay area. You can see the standard commercial zoning along State Street, the city center district, the MCCD that we were just talking about, and our new MCMU zone, that was the MU zone before. We wanted to, after we adopted those zones and started to implement them, we realized that there are no categories that correspond in the future land use map in the general plan. So just as a brief sort of reevaluation of how that all works, we have that future land use map, this map here, that the categories, the land use categories are supposed to correspond to certain zones. So what we did was adopt some zones, and then we didn't have a category for them in the future land use map, as was pointed out to me helpfully by staff members after we finished all the work on the zoning. So I am here in a housekeeping capacity, and I felt like I should just admit that that was just something I missed doing when we were processing. So we have, in this future land use category, I don't know if you can see my cursor. Yeah, that's what Zach called it, managing up. Let me manage up today, we forgot to do this, or we should have done this concurrently, but we did not do that. So Zach's probably watching and laughing at himself right now. Or at me, rather. So these categories, as you can see these colors, the city center district, and it doesn't look exactly the same, but you can see that color here. So these are the future land use categories. And each one of those in Chapter 5, in that element, is going to correspond to certain zones, right? You can see low-density residential, these are just some of the ones that are available there. Our mixed-use, which we've always called mixed-use before, and that's one of the ones that we want to make a slight change to, to make it more appropriately match up to the new zones. Remember, in the new zones, we establish them, or we will establish them, based on areas of change that are identified in the general plan, and then those tests that we put into the code. So this is just to remind you that they could go in different places. And so as we look at the future land use map, some of these areas, let's say that someone comes in and wants to go into State Street somewhere and ask us if it's appropriate to make a change. If the city feels like it's appropriate to make that change for the zoning, we'll also want to make a land use map, future land use map change to correspond. We can't really do that right now because we don't have the category yet. So what we're proposing is that, what we have always called mixed-use, that you see, sorry, I didn't order these very well, but that mixed-use right here, we've always called this mixed-use. We had it in the transit in our fire clay area and down around this central station. What we're proposing is that we now, that's a kind of a transit. We re-categorize it as the Murray Central mixed-use, so it's kind of associated with the central station. And the north station is TOD, so it's associated with transit as well. We'd like to rename that Transit mixed-use as a land use category and have it correspond to the Murray Central mixed-use, as you can see there, and the transit-oriented development zones around those stations. And then also, we would introduce a new mixed-use category instead of just having the one. We'd introduce a new mixed-use category that is Village and Centers mixed-use. This language that you see there is taken right out of the purpose statement for those zones that we just adopted. And then that would apply, these two zones at the bottom, the CMU and VMU zones would be the ones that were appropriate. So this would essentially allow us to appropriately review zoning, rezoning requests, and have land use categories that correspond to them, so we can update that map as well. While the general plan in 2017 was adopted to tell us that we ought to consider those kinds of things, since we hadn't adopted them, we didn't have a future land use category for them, so. The Planning Commission reviewed all of this information on September 2nd. We mailed notices to affected entities, no one had any concerns. We didn't actually receive any public comments that night, and they voted 6 to 0 to recommend the approval. We talked about this actual issue for about 15 minutes and the land use element of the general plan for about 45. So they were more interested in that stuff, but there's a lot in there. If you're going to read one part of the general plan, that's the one I would suggest you read, Chapter 5 of the second section. We did make the findings that these changes are in harmony with those objectives, because as I mentioned, it does, that general plan does tell us to do this. It just didn't give us the categories for it because we hadn't established them yet. And they support the recently approved amendments, and they're really necessary so that we can process these applications that are going to be coming in appropriately. Any questions, or Melinda had a?
Yeah, so we have actually been delaying some of the applications that we've received so that we can get this in place and approved, so that when we take general plan amendments that, to the Planning Commission and the City Council, we can have a legitimate future land use category to put them in. So as an example, we do have an application from Boyer Company to, for the RC Willie site. We had that late last year, early this year on the agenda. Because now we have different zones, their application for the general plan amendment, instead of being for a mixed-use category, will be instead for the Villages and Centers mixed-use, correct?
Right.
And so it's really a small semantics, but a housekeeping item that needs to be taken place before we can go in and have these these three applications that are coming forward in the next couple of meetings. Before we can have those processed, we need to have the future land use category created, since we already created the zones.
Can I ask a question? Melinda, so when you talk about Boyer Company, they were one of them who had done it, who had put an application in before and withdrew because of the mixed-use. Do they have to go back through, when they reapply, do they have to go back through the planning zoning again?
Yes.
And through us again? So it's not just kind of a, anyway, that's your answer to the question.
Yes, and that's a very, that's a very intelligent question. And the reason why is because we we now have zones on the book that were never even contemplated as an option when they submitted their application a year ago. And also because of that, we needed to create these different future land use categories. So before, we just had all the mixed-use in one category. Now we have them separated out, as Jared explained, we have the TOD, we have, you know, we have the Centers and the Villages and those other categories. So that was also not an option for them to apply for. So they have to go back through the entire process from start to finish. So it'll go, once this is in place, then we can legitimately accept an application because these options will exist within the general plan, whereas we just had them in zoning code before.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you, because on my paper, I don't know if you can go back to the slide.
Which one?
That one. Okay, so what was the density before? So ranges between 10 to, I don't know what that is, 7?
Good question. It's, so it was, I can't read it, but it was low, 10 to 30, I think. 10 units the acre to 30. And we only had the one, we had two categories for mixed-use. We had the city center, which was only applicable to downtown. And then we had this mixed-use. And I, this was a, this came up once before in a previous meeting where I said, "We actually do a lot more density than that in the zoning itself. Why would our future land use category have it so much lower?" So I reached out to the consultant that helped us do this and asked that question. And she didn't really remember why we had set the density at that, whether it was actually a mistake, or probably more likely that it was considered broadly across the area that would be put into that category. Since it's not necessarily meant to be project-specific, it's about that whole area. So let me go back to a map. So here's the, here's the area that is categorized as mixed-use, all of this. And not all of those properties are going to be developed as full mixed-use properties. So your range in the end, looking at the whole area of the city that you've done as mixed-use is going to be between 10 and 30 units the acre, when you're building 60 and 70 in projects. What we should have done, I think, and was to do what we've done here, when we have specific zones that are tied to it, the densities that are in those zones are the ones that should be listed as appropriate. Otherwise, it doesn't really do its job of matching up the future land use map and the zoning. So what you're going to see, what we've proposed then is to match these categories or these density ranges for the TOD and the MCMU zones to go up to the maximum that we allow in those two zones and the minimum that we would allow to. And then in the Village and Mixed Use, you see the same thing. Density's between 25 and 45. What we allow is a base, and the highest that we allow with all of the additions in the CMU. Does that help explain?
So mixed-use is now going to be transit mixed-use.
Yeah, what was previously mixed-use.
Okay, and where's Villages and Centers mixed-use going?
Well, it's not on the map yet.
Oh, but it would be like where the RC Willie is, right?
It'd be, if it's approved, we would change the future land use map designation of those properties where RC Willie has been to Village and Centers mixed-use to match a zone that we're anticipating allowing there to.
Now.
Approved.
Okay, I'm trying to remember what was in the mixed-use packet when we redid it. Is that the same amount, or is it more?
They're less dense. These two zones, the VMU and CMU, are less dense than the transit-oriented ones because the facilities the city has and the traffic circulation that can be handled, et cetera, around stations is a lot greater than the ability of our systems to handle that density in the outlying areas like 9th East and State Street and other areas. So the densities in the VMU and CMU are less. That's where we need the other category. Right now, they would be asking for mixed-use, and mixed-use doesn't tell us, the mixed-use, the current existing mixed-use future land use category doesn't tell us that VMU and CMU zones are appropriate for it because they didn't exist when we created that category. So it's more appropriate to do it this way.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Good question. The hard part is picking a new color. We've used a lot of colors. I don't know where to get another color. Zach's in charge of that. We'll palette mix some things. If any of you have suggestions, feel free to let us know.
Since we're on this topic, I know there was things that the council wanted to see differently. Do you know where we're at with those items?
Yeah, we're working with Jennifer Kennedy to try and find some dates that could work for a discussion. But frankly, with the amount of items that we have coming forward and the meeting cancellations that have taken place in November and December, we're really short on days for the scheduled council meetings. So we may have to think outside of those and come up with some dates that would work.
How many people have come forward with their applications?
For.
Four?
Yeah.
I would love to see that come forward before, if we're doing this, to kind of see that come forward before too.
Most of them are not in the.
Are not in those zones.
They're in the, well, I guess I shouldn't say most.
Well, there's. Yeah, and that, going forward with a zone change application, I mean, we could still change the actual zoning code without, it's a, I mean, I think what I'm hearing you say is you would like to get, if there are changes the council wants to make, you would like to get those in place so that future projects could be under those new ordinances.
Correct.
Yeah. So a zone change could come forward and a project still not have an application come through for many months. So, I mean, it's.
Likely in this case because they're complicated applications, the master site plan.
Yeah, so we can look at, I mean, I think that I replied to you earlier today with some other dates, but we can look at alternate dates for, you know, not just Tuesday afternoons as we normally have our committee the whole. We can look at other dates to try and get that conversation going. I know that at least on one of those applications, they will have a zone text amendment that they'd like to see. That'll be the Galleria AISU project. They outlined one of those changes in the letter that they submitted to the City Council back on July 20th, I think it was. So they still have one of those that they would like to see come forward, so.
And I should clarify, I said four, but there's really, there are two that we've received that we're getting ready to process as we move forward with this, and two that we know are coming in soon or that are being prepared, so.
Did we have, were we pretty strict on our dates? Is that why? Help me out on the dates that we wanted to go out driving around with you.
Yeah, so we, we're juggling a lot of balls here trying to get things through because we have the design guidelines, so we wanted to do the kind of walking tour, the driving tour, committee of the whole discussion on the mixed-use zones. And then we really, after, I mean, we have an October meeting, which the agenda's already set for, and then we have our November 16th meeting and our December 14th, 7th meeting. So we only have, I mean, normally, we would have a lot of time, right? We would have four meetings that we could kind of tag on to, to have that discussion. But I mean, I think just my department alone has like 10 or 12 items that we need to push through these next three meetings. And so we can also start a committee the whole at like 1 o'clock in the afternoon if we needed to. Whatever can work for the council, but there's just a lot of tight timeframes with those council meetings.
Yeah, I think we requested it a while ago, though, so we've had time. We just need to get it done. I think we'd all like to see that, so. Anyway. So let's work on it, okay?
Anything else for us?
Is there any?
No, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we're good, thank you. Jennifer, announcements?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind you guys about the two ribbon cuttings that are coming this week. The first one is Thursday at the Abington at 10:30 a.m. And the next one is Friday at Storage, Stills and Daily Dills at 10 a.m. I sent the information to you guys. Some of you have let me know you're going. If you still want to go and have them, let me know, just let me know. And that's it.
All right, thank you, we are adjourned.